Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders Meeting. We are going to start with our conference agenda. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett, here. Best, Duffy, James.
Here.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lazara.
Here.
Lou, just as a matter of clarification, this is actually the freeholder meeting. It's not, we advertised the freeholder meeting for 5:30, right?
Administrator, we advertised the conference agenda to begin at 5:30 in order to allow us to do the Passaic County 9/11 memorial ceremony, which will be held virtually. And then the regular meeting is to begin immediately following the conclusion of the conference agenda.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with a roll call.
I just did it while we have.
Okay, so let me start again. So on Tuesday of this week, we, we're going virtual with the 9/11 recognition today. And that's obviously due to the pandemic. So I'm going to ask Micah if you could please run what we've taped. I don't hear anything.
I have a resolution for that. It'll be up or popping running in 15 seconds. Okay, I apologize for a technical issue. Just give me, give me a few minutes to get this figured out.
Director, if you like, I know that we have a couple of late starters. If we want to get that business out of the way while Micah is.
Sure.
Good idea, good idea.
Filler in the business.
I have three late starters and one amendment to the consent agenda. I'll start with the amendment. It's to K-78. There is just an incorrect legal citation in the body. It's correctly stated in the title as NJSA 40A:11-12, but incorrectly in the body. So that just needs to be amended. K-81, a resolution authorizing the purchase of various equipment for the Division of Home Energy and Weatherization pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-12. K-82 is a resolution for award of contract to affordable interior systems through commercial furniture interiors for installation of new furniture for the new Department of Public Works facility located at 1310 Route 23 North, Wayne, New Jersey through state contract pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-12 at SEC. And finally, K-83, a resolution authorizing the purchase of furniture for the Planning and Economic Development Department pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-12.
Thank you, Matt.
Ready for Micah yet?
Director.
If there are any other questions on the consent agenda, now would maybe be a good time to ask them.
Director, through you.
Yes.
The, the letter from County Council with the Goff book.
With the work.
Encroachment. Is that a late starter?
No, that was, that was just for informational purposes for the freeholders.
Oh, okay. Is that the only, Matthew, is that the only letter you shut out?
No, that was just one. There's approximately 20 to 25 properties.
Whoa, okay.
All fairly minor, though.
Okay, thank you.
So can I take, so I guess I can do a motion to amend K-78?
We'll have to wait till the regular agenda to do that, Director.
Okay, I don't know if we could do it ahead of time since we have a little time.
And I'm ready to attempt the, I'm ready to attempt the video again if you guys are ready.
All right, Micah, thank you.
On a day much like today, a Tuesday, on September 11th, 2001, 19 men who were trained by Al Qaeda callously slaughtered 3,000 people, and that number continues to grow. Of those nearly 3,000 people, 31 were from Passaic County. And our lives, as we knew it then, has changed forever. I bet many of you know exactly where you were and what you were doing that morning. And it's still difficult to comprehend how such evil actions can be devised by human beings. In the 19 years since the attack, I often look to the legacy of 9/11 and wonder what lessons we have learned. Where is this world headed? And this I know. Our generation, as an outcome of 9/11, has had to develop a steely resolve to be strong, to stay strong in the face of crisis. We are being challenged more these days than ever before since 9/11. It's not by allowing a pandemic, racism, or looming financial collapse to define us. It's how we respond to those things that does. We have to hold onto our values and common sense. By doing so, we can best memorialize those we lost on 9/11. I join you in moving forward. The problems and issues may seem many, but there's no doubt that together we will overcome them as we have continued to do since 9/11. On behalf of the entire Board of Chosen Freeholders, we hold close the memories and sacrifices of those we lost on 9/11. Thank you.
At this time, I invite my colleagues, if there are any comments, anything I'd like to add to this, this memorial.
I think you did a very good job, Sandy. You know, this gets to be more and more difficult every year for the families that lost people. So that was very respectful, very well done. And I think a proper tribute where we are today. I think that was a proper tribute. So congratulations on doing that. I think it was well done, really well done. Still emotional, it's still tough to. To hear it all, but well done.
If there's no other comments or anything, we should do a moment of silence, I think, in memory of all those that we lost on 9/11. Thank you. We'll move on with, we did the review of the agenda already. Council, County Council, do you have any other thing that you need to talk about? Obviously, we're not going to go into executive session, but.
Executive session, Director, and just my general reminder that if any freeholders want something voted on individually off the consent agenda, to just make that motion prior.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Second.
Second.
And roll call.
Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
He said yes, I heard him.
Okay, James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lazara.
Yes. And we're going to move on to our consent agenda. We'll start with the roll call.
Freehold, Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lazara.
Here.
Can we have the announcement of the open public meeting tomorrow?
Take notice, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders on January 6th, 2020, adopted Resolution Number R-2020-0001, which calls for the location of the conference and regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 5:30 and 6:00 p.m., respectfully to be held at Passaic County Community College Public Safety Academy in Wayne, New Jersey. Due to the state of emergency and the public health emergency declared by New Jersey Governor Philip Murphy, set forth an executive order 103 and further limitations of public gatherings, set forth an executive order 104, the Board will hold the conference and regular meeting virtually via Facebook Live and Cisco WebEx. Additionally, pursuant to administrative order number 20-01, issued by the Passaic County Administration Administrator, closing the Administration Building to the public effect of March 18th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m., the Board will commence the conference meeting at 5:30 and the regular meeting will commence immediately at the conclusion of the conference meeting. There will be no members of the public physically present or authorized, and as authorized under NJSA 10:4-12A. If a member of the public wishes to place a public comment in record, please email public@passaiccountynj.org stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the Board no later than September 8th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. or by participating on Facebook Live at facebook.com/pasaiccountynj/ Clerk of the Board shall read the same into the public record. Moreover, some members of the Board may participate telephonically pursuant to the Board bylaws and compliance with NJSA 10:4-12-1, et cetera. Official action will be taken, both published in the Herald News and the Bergen Record, and I'll file with the county clerk.
And the invitation.
Open eyes who provides for thy people, bond thy power, rules over them in law. Our freeholders, this is the day. That thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And can we have a moment of silence for the men and women that we have lost while they've been serving the United States or our forces?
Director, can we also add both former Freeholder Georgia Scott, who served in the late 90s and early 2000s, along with, we had another employee who passed away, not of COVID, but still a tragic loss, Dean Behan, who was in our Buildings and Grounds Department.
Of course. Thank you. Have a motion to the approve the minutes of August 12, 2020.
One more, second.
Roll call.
Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lazara.
Yes. We'll move on to free, oh, wait, I'm going to invite Dr. Goff to fill us in on what's going on with the county with the pandemic.
Good evening, Freeholders, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, next slide. Today is the 179th since COVID came into our county, next slide. As of yesterday noon, we had a total of 18,499 cases in Passaic County and 1,104 deaths. And as you can see throughout the world, the numbers are increasing dramatically. Next slide. Passaic County remains in the top five counties impacted by COVID-19. As you can see, we're number five. Next slide, please. So this is a new slide that I'm introducing today. We have a new epidemiologist onboard, and so we have some more detail. This is a cumulative incidence rate, which means based on our population, when you compare us with other counties, we actually have the highest cumulative incidence rate than all the others. And that's based on our population. So this is 3,691 per 100,000 population. So that's pretty scary when you look at it in that way. The previous slide showed you raw data in terms of numbers of cases, but this slide shows you in comparison to our overall population that we are actually leading in number of cumulative incidence rates. Next slide. This slide I've shown you before, just in a different way. From our municipalities, Patterson has the highest burden of cases, with 40% of cases in the state county of COVID-19. From the beginning, our president of Patterson. And when you add the city of Passaic and the city of Clifton, you see that the cities are disproportionately represented in terms of cases. Of course, the next one is Wayne, and we know some of the reasons why, which we'll talk about later. Next slide. All right, this is the overall EPI curve. And this is showing the cases in Passaic County from the beginning of the pandemic till today. And you can see, as you already know, that March into April, we were really, there were many, many cases. There is some data scrubbing with this slide. And previously, the slides that we used were showing from the date that we heard of the cases. But now that we're scrubbing the data, we're going back and we're discovering that people were symptomatic prior to us obviously getting the case. So there's going to be some shifts that I've explained over time. And as we continue to scrub the data, you're going to see the shift. I also want to point out to you that in the month of June and July, you can see that we continue to have a number of cases in the community. As you see, in August, it started to go up a little bit, and September has just started. But we have also reopened restaurants. We have reopened schools. So I'm curious to see how this is going to develop over time. Next slide. All right, so this slide is showing a breakdown. On the left, you see female to male ratios. And on the right, we have broken down, as much as we could, the positive cases by age. As you can see, the number there is 18,001, too, because we do not have the age data for every single case. But this is what we have so far. Again, as we continue to scrub and continue to do research, we will hopefully have this completed sometime in the future. Next slide. All right, so this slide shows cases by race and ethnicity. One on the left is showing the state of New Jersey. The one on your right is showing for Passaic County. Now, this data only represents a fraction of cases because that information was not captured in many of the cases and definitely not at the beginning of the pandemic. So it's a subset of, of all the cases. But even, even so, you can see from our slide in Passaic County that 47% of cases self-labeled as white. You can also see 37% of cases did not identify a race or ethnicity. And you can see 12% black or African-American and 4% Asian. We were not able to, we don't have the capability yet to do ethnicity with our data, but we're working on that. So for the, for the ethnicity data, you can see 60% of persons represented, presented themselves as Hispanic or Latino, while 40% were everyone else. Next slide. All right, next slide. So the, the next slides are to speak about mortality in Passaic County. With a population of approximately 503,491 persons, the cases per capita is 3.61. Case fatality rate, that's people who died from COVID, who were sick from COVID, and that's 6%. We also tried to break it down to see what people are dying from and how COVID has affected mortality in Passaic County. And it's not very evident yet. When you compare data from 2010 to 2019, around this time, we're seeing about this number of deaths versus this for 2020. That information is better seen with the whole state of New Jersey because by April of 2019 in New Jersey, there were about 6,000 deaths. Whereas April of 2020, because of COVID, there is a dramatic increase in death in New Jersey. Next slide, please. All right, this is proportion of confirmed COVID deaths by municipality. Again, Patterson is 28%. Remember from a couple of slides back that 40% of cases were attributed to Patterson, but 28% of deaths are attributed to Patterson. Passaic City was around, I think, 17 or 18%, but 21% of cases in Passaic County resulted in, in death. And you can see here that Wayne is now the third one, and we know some of the reasons why. So with Clifton, Wayne, and Passaic City, you can see that those numbers have increased dramatically because of the vulnerable population in the long-term care facilities. Next slide. This slide speaks about total deaths, breakdown by sex and age in Passaic County. And you could see that male were 57%. That's 57% of the people who died in Passaic County from COVID were male, as opposed to 43% being female. This next slide is a breakdown, and again, we only have the data for about 1,075 persons thus far, and this is what it looks like. So people who are 85 and older represent about 28% of, of the deaths in Passaic County, followed by 75 to 84 and 65 to 74. Next slide, please. All right, this is just another slide showing you breakdown by race and ethnicity, and this is throughout New Jersey. So you can see throughout New Jersey, 54% of persons who died from COVID-19 were white, 20.3% were Hispanic, 18.3 were black, 5.5 were Asian, and 1.9 checked off other. Next slide. All right, this really busy slide, you've seen it many times before. But this is just again showing you that in some cases, the long-term care facilities are responsible for most of the deaths. You can see very clearly with Wayne Township. You can see very clearly with Bloomingdale. We also started to do incidents for 100,000 population. And you could see that in the city of Clifton, the incidents, which is new cases, are 4,360 per 100,000 population. The state is now providing data for zip code data for populations of 20,000 or more. So even if you see towns like Hilton, the reason why is because of a shared zip code. So they were able to break that down for us. Next slide. This is COVID-19 cases and deaths, broken down by municipality. In Bloomingdale, you can see 2.4 cases per population. But when you do the case fatality rate, which is the number of people who died from COVID, you could see 13% of people in Bloomingdale who had COVID-19 died from COVID-19. And that's because, again, of the long-term care facility there. If we scroll down to Wanaque, we can see something similar. 15% of the people who had COVID in Wanaque died from COVID. But this is again because of the long-term care. Same for Wayne Township. So when you look at other municipalities who had no long-term care, you get an idea of how it affected those municipalities, and it affected them differently. Next slide. Okay, COVID-19 cases, and, and this is just looking at long-term care in general. So during this outbreak, during this pandemic, we had 33 different outbreaks within our long-term care facilities. Thankfully, we're down to six. The others have been closed. In other words, they have seen more than two incubation periods. And the state of New Jersey has determined that those outbreaks are now closed. So we have six active outbreaks, and all the others have been closed. Overall, with, with COVID-19, there were 1,344 residents of long-term care facilities contracted COVID. We can see here in staff cases, 843 staff members. We can see here in staff cases, 843 staff members had COVID-19. Currently, only 219 residents, 294. Just want to bring this to your attention. At one point, we had this many residents with COVID-19. Now we're down to 294. Obviously, we know that we've lost some residents. But really, this is showing that we really have been able to bring this down tremendously in long-term care. Long-term care deaths for residents were 417. And we also lost 15 staff members of long-term care to COVID-19. Next slide.
Dr. Gungil, what frequency or quantity of cases is required for something to be called an outbreak?
So an outbreak is a general term that's called, it's called more than usual. But in terms of, let's say, anything in the population, you can expect, let's say influenza, you can expect influenza, let's say, three out of 10, so 30% in the population during the flu season. But we have an outbreak when we have more than what is expected. So if we have, let's say, five out of 10 or 50%, we know that's more than is expected. So we call it an outbreak. If it is something a little bit different, something like Ebola, which is not in the population, it is not endemic in the population, in that case, one case is an outbreak. So it depends on what the disease is. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next slide. All right, so what are we doing in Passaic County? Our testing. Next slide. We continue to test, and this is a new slide here again today. We wanted to show you what's happening in each municipality with our testing. So we can look at the bottom here and see overall in Passaic County. And this is testing, not just our testing, testing of doctors, testing of other testing sites. In the county of Passaic, we have almost 188,000 separate tests were conducted in Passaic County. Of that very last column, 114, 688 were different individuals. So as we know, we have people who, whether they're long-term care or people who have to be tested for work, are tested more than once, more than twice. So what we try to do is to try to identify individuals, unique individuals, to show exactly how many people are tested. And so this data on the end here is showing that about 20% of our population has been tested so far. And so we've also broken them down by positive and negative. 23,455 positive tests and 147,268 negative tests. Again, when we broke it down even further, this is the number here that's really important. Not that the others are not, but this one actually tells you how many people we're actually reaching in the population. And that again is from all testing for any resident of Passaic County. Okay, next slide. All right, this is percent positivity. When we began, as we know, in the heat of COVID, and this actually, when you look at our Epi curve, you can see it follows a similar pattern. When we were testing at this time, we were testing symptomatic people and people with a prescription. So we had a very, very high percent positivity rate. And as time went by, when we were allowed to test anyone, whether they're symptomatic or not, then we have more and more people who tested negative. So now we're down to, as of September 1st, 3.61 positivity rate in Passaic County. Next slide. So Passaic County's testing. As you know, we began our at-home testing on June 1st. We have tested over 6,300 people thus far. And this information here is really important because these are unique individuals. In other words, for the at-home testing program, we only testing, we only allowed one test per person. So we can have some kind of clean data in terms of how many tests, how many people we are reaching. The mobile testing continues, and we've tested over 10,000 people with our mobile testing. Next slide. All right, this slide just shows you that our schedule for September and October. I want people to note that we're testing mainly on Saturdays now because schools are open, other activities are going on in parking lots. And so it is, it's best for us to do it on Saturdays. So please make a note of it. Next slide, please. This slide shows you where we've been in Passaic County. So we've been to 12 municipalities out of 16. But in some municipalities, we have tested at places that serve all of the residents in several municipalities. And obviously, anywhere we go, any resident of Passaic County is welcome. So in some cases, we've been to Wannecue, for example. At PCC, at the State County Community College, we've been there three times, and we've tested over 1,400 individuals there. So we're trying to go all over the county to give people the opportunity for testing as close to home as possible. Next slide. Contact tracing, next slide. Excuse me, we hired six individuals to do contact tracing. We were assigned 19 more. And within Passaic County, in concert with all the other health departments, we now have 137 contact tracers working in the county. Next slide. Another piece that we're doing is travel advisory. And I believe this is the first time we're showing you this slide. We get these emails from states regarding residents who have come in, whether they've flown in or come by train or whatever. As long as they're able to get the information to the State Department of Health, they get it to us. And we, as the links agency, have to send it up to the local health officers. So this slide shows you the residents of every municipality that have been contacted because they have come in from a state where they, a state where we are quarantined after returning home. So you can see here that Patterson, 179 individuals from Patterson self-reported or from their manifest, we were able to determine that they came from a state where the rate of COVID is higher than what we want our residents to come from. And so we were able to contact, to reach out to. We're required to try to contact them by phone, by email, whatever, in whatever way that's done. We're not able to every time, but we are required to at least make one attempt. Next slide. All right, this is the last slide, and it is a reminder to people, especially as we're going out and about, that we still have to do the things we did in March and April and May to flatten the curve. We still have to wash our hands, avoid close contact, wear our masks, cover our coughs and sneezes, clean and disinfect, monitor our health daily by taking our temperatures, get tested. We're making testing available to you. Please take advantage of it. And work with contact tracers. When they call and they say there are contact tracers, they will not ask you for your social security number, but they will ask you where you're from and who you've been in contact with so that we could reach out and we could stop the spread of COVID-19 here in Passaic County. Thank you. Are there any questions?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody have a freehold report?
I do, but I'm not on the list once again.
Well, you're always on the list.
Yeah, there's lots of lists, just not this one. Lou, maybe next meeting, we might be able to put me on there, maybe?
Yeah, of course.
Not you, you don't do the thing. Yeah, I want to, I want to just say one thing. I went to our park, our Garfield Park in Hawthorne. And it was particularly disturbing, and while Dr. Gungil is listening, the playground that we put in place that was packed with people, not one person wearing a mask, not one. They were all on top of each other, and it wasn't just the kids, it was the parents. And completely ignoring the signs that said, well, you can't socially distance, wear a mask. Nobody was doing it. There was a park attendant didn't address it. I already talked to our administrator about this. And then there was a large group of people playing basketball, all on top of each other. Again, no masks whatsoever. You know, that's, a sheriff's officer showed up and asked me whether or not he should be addressing them. And I said, I didn't call you, and no. I mean, I don't know what we're supposed to do there. You know, we have enough problems with law enforcement and people interacting sometimes badly. So either we're going to enforce this or we're not. And, you know, we have the ability to close areas and parks if people are not going to be compliant. I'm concerned about it because we're going into flu season, which Dr. Gungil will report is coming. And add that to what could be an uptick in COVID because of schools back. And you saw what happened over the weekend, people down the shore, a lot of people not wearing masks. So I don't know that we're not going to have an uptick anyway. But why are we allowing this when we know that it's dangerous? That's just my thought on it, so I wanted to report on that. It was very disturbing to see it. And actually, a guy called Hawthorne Police, which is why one sheriff's officer showed up, because I was taking pictures to show Dr. Gungil what people were doing there, just to have a grip on this. But they're not compliant at all. It's like it never happened, and it's not happening, and they don't have to worry about it. It's disturbing. That's my report.
That is disturbing. Okay. We are going to move on to the oral portion.
I'm sorry, Madam Director, I wanted to show if anybody else had a, I got a quick report.
Okay.
So as mentioned before, at our previous meeting, the governor was expected to sign a piece of legislation officially changing the names of Passaic County freeholders, actually, all freeholders in the state of New Jersey to county commissioners. That actually passed. The governor signed that legislation. I had the opportunity to attend that bill signing in Trenton along with the other 19 African-American freeholders in the state of New Jersey. They gave us an official date of January 1st to change the name as well as the letterhead and everything that the name is on. So so far, I think that the county is taking the right steps in terms of preparing the website for an official changeover on September, I'm sorry, on January 1st. Even though some people have already begun to refer to us as county commissioners, we are still freeholders until December 31st. And on the election, this upcoming election, I just wanted to remind the voters that you will still be voting for county freeholders. You will not be voting for county commissioners just yet. You will still be voting for Board of Chosen Freeholders at this upcoming election. So your ballot will reflect the fact that this is the last election in which you will be voting for a freeholder. And come January 1, the name will officially be changed over to county commissioner. That's all. Thank you.
And you know what, there, just one little comment there, TJ. And should we win, we will be the first county commissioners sworn in in the county of, not for you, should you win, and I hope you do.
Yeah, so we're electing you as freeholders.
Celebration.
Yeah.
We're electing you as freeholders, but you'll serve as commissioners.
Yes.
And that makes Sandy the last ever freeholder director.
Yes, that's true.
Which is quite something.
Freeholder director, yes.
Like Alpha and Omega, it's kind of biblical.
I guess so.
Another thing that I just wanted to bring up real quick. This election, as you know, is going to be very interesting in terms of being mostly vote by mail. The governor did put out some additional information that counties should attempt to have at least 50% of the poll sites open with each municipality having at least one in-person polling place. In addition to that, I think that the number of vote by mail boxes that we have in the county are double. I would actually like to see a triple or even quadruple. All of this information is being done by our Board of Elections. As we all know, but as the public may not, there's several entities that are responsible for our elections, including the Clerk's Office, the Superintendent of Election, and the Board of Elections, not the freeholders or the soon-to-be county commissioners. So with that being said, as soon as the information is up to date and we know where the vote-by-mail drop boxes are going to be located, including the ones that we currently have, as well as the ones we have on order, we will put that information out, as well as when we know when the, what polling places will actually be open for in-person voting. So as soon as all of that information comes out, our administrative team, Tony and his team over there, does a great job with flyers and social media. We will make sure that we have that information provided to the public.
By the way, the ballots go out on October 5th. They'll be in the mail.
Yep.
As soon as they get that ballot, they can always mail it in. Sooner the better.
Yep, and I would add one other thing, TJ. That was a great summary of the election law issues. October 13th is the deadline to register to vote. New Jersey now has online voter registration, which you can access. I believe it's via the Secretary of State's website. But I'll ask our staff to post that link on the Passaic County Facebook page and Twitter. But you can still register to vote if you're going to be 18 by November 3rd or even on November 3rd, if Election Day is your birthday. You can register to vote at age 17 so that you can vote at age 18 in a very important election. And speaking of things that count, I'm just going to put in one last, not almost last plug. The census count ends on September 30th. And if you haven't been counted, you're really not paying attention to what I've been saying for the last year. But that's okay, because you've got 22 more days to go to my2020census.gov, fill it out, make sure our county gets the resources and representation that it needs for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, great information. Can we move on, or does, anybody else, no? Okay, we're going to move on to the oral portion, which is actually phone-ins and people emailing in questions. So I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
I'm moving.
Roll call.
Freeholders, Apter?
Yes.
Hartlet?
Yes.
Best? Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. We'll give him a couple of minutes.
Okay, so Director, we have several people that posted questions on Facebook Live. So there's a Steven Susan, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. On the proposed bill was the Wayne DPW requesting furniture, one of the richest towns in New Jersey. Then you skip to the 9/11 memorial. Is, what is wrong with you, people on the board?
I'm sorry to laugh.
There is a Mr. Sanjay Desai. Would like to know why Rangers driving the golf carts with no mask at the county park, referring to the county's, county park in, I believe, Woodland Park. Then a Mr. Charles Ferreira, according to the coronavirus, sorry. Virus relief fund guidelines, I would like to know why didn't transfer some of the funding that you are giving directly to Patterson? some of the funding that you are giving directly to Patterson? What, funding that were not given directly to the Patterson School District? Since you still have funding, is there, there's still time to provide help? Um, George Silva is checking in and, uh, thank you all. God bless each one of you, future commissioners. Be safe. And I forgot to mention, Dr. Gungil did a great report. And then there's a, um, a Joe Jen, uh, Fiorito, I, uh, if you can, um, wait in line at the D, uh, DMV and stores, why can't we vote in person? And I'm not talking provisionally either. the also Director, the public at Passaic County NJ, uh, email address did not have any questions or comments on that. Uh, one more person on here, uh, Nakeem James, I work for Preakness Healthcare Center. A few months ago, a few of us were told, uh, we wouldn't have a, we couldn't have a second job while working at the facility due to the, uh, possibility of increasing the chance of catching COVID virus. We were, we were also told we had sorry. Also told we had to choose between either or. My question is, now that things are opening back up, is there a chance for the, for those who want to go back to having a second job more open? so, and that Joe Jen Fiori, Fiori Yoto, um, uh, also mentioned, uh, have Passaic County Open Space Grants been awarded yet? And that's all I have, uh, Director.
The move to close the public portion?
Freeholders' actor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Uh, Clerk, Mr. Clerk, if I could, uh, if I could vote yes there?
Director, if you want, I could pick off some of those, uh, questions.
Answer the Wayne one, Tony, because the guy got that totally wrong. And maybe you could correct what he heard.
Sure, that's an easy one. Um, and Lou, I didn't get the names, but, uh, the Wayne DPW is the location of a county, uh, facility, uh, a Wayne-owned facility. It's on Route 23 in Wayne. So it's the county that is building a new facility that we need to purchase the furniture for. So it's not for the township of Wayne. Uh, the golf cart, uh, Rangers, I will address that with Daryl and make sure that, uh, the Rangers are wearing masks when, uh, when needed and appropriate. Thank you for that. Uh, Patterson School District, so the guidance is, uh, the guidance from the federal government allows for money to go to school districts. Um, however, one of the things you have to keep in mind is that this is federal guidance. So there are areas in the, in the country where counties actually operate school districts. So our position here in Passaic County, because remember, any money that we spend is going to be at some point audited, uh, and any monies that are deemed by the federal government not to be spent, uh, according to the guidance will have to be repaid. So we're trying to be cautious as we can. What we have told all of the towns that, um, because many, all the schools did get their own, uh, money as well. So once the schools have spent that money, if they want to, if the towns, if the municipalities want to make purchases on behalf of the school district, uh, they can, again, so long as it's an appropriate expenditure, and then we would still reimburse the town, not the school. So I don't know if that, uh, answers that gentleman's question or not, but that's the position that we have taken, uh, because again, our, our concern is two years from now when the Inspector General comes, uh, of them clawing back money and us having to come up with money to, to, to repay. Um, again, I'll skip over voting in person. There may be Freeholders that want to talk about the voting, uh, and I'll do that. Uh, Preakness Healthcare Center, that's a, a great question. Uh, two things. One, there is a resolution tonight authorizing hazard pay, uh, for workers at Preakness Healthcare Center, which I think we all agree, uh, you know, they were, uh, up close and personal, particularly, uh, many of our residents have to be fed, many of them have to be changed. Uh, so these are, these are employees who really were in very close contact, especially the ones who are working in, um, in, in the units that were, that were positive. Uh, along with that, we are in discussions about lifting, uh, the administrative order of prohibiting, uh, the second job. So, uh, Lucinda and I have, have spoken about that and we are, um, we haven't made a final decision as to a date and time yet, uh, but we are discussing and we hope to be able to lift, lift that administrative order very soon. Uh, and the last, oh, Open Space Grants, I couldn't read my own writing. So this year, due to COVID, we decided that we would skip over the 20, uh, 20 round of, uh, of Open Space Grants. And I've spoken to the mayors and just recently sent them a, um, questionnaire. So what we're going to do is double up in 2021. And so all the money that would have been given out this year will roll over into next year and we will give out twice the money in 2021 and push it up earlier so that towns can begin to the process of doing what they wouldn't be able to do this year anyway, um, in getting these projects done because of the lateness of it. So, uh, there hasn't been a mayor who was, uh, you know, who was opposed to doing that because by time it would have awarded any Open Space Grants this year, it would have been very close to the end of the year. Uh, I think that was it, Louis, other than I did skip over the, uh, uh, voting in person. I don't know if the Director or anyone wants to deal with that issue, more of a political issue than it is a administrative issue.
I can address that briefly, Sandy, if you'd like me to.
Of course.
Um, so, you know, full disclosure, I'm not just a Freeholder, I'm also a lawyer and specifically an election lawyer. Uh, so this is, uh, the work that I do. The thing of, the way that voting is going to work this year is kind of the ultimate example of what a lot of us sort of talk about and understand in terms of COVID-19, which is that the precautions we take are not first and foremost about protecting ourselves. They're first and foremost about protecting the people around us. So when you're talking about the decision to have all voting done by mail, which is a call that the governor made with respect to the primary, and a call now that he has made with respect to the general election as well, that's really about the space and the environment in the polling places as much as anything else. It's about the fact that, uh, and I say this with love and affection, uh, the typical poll worker is old enough to ipso facto be a member of a, uh, at-risk group, uh, in terms of COVID-19 infection. And, um, the decision was made based upon that, based upon the issues that would arise needing to constantly sanitize the surface of a voting machine and all the other things that you touch when you go in to vote. Um, the decision was made by the governor and wisely so, I think, to again, do an all-vote-by-mail, uh, election this year. If you're a active registered voter, you're going to get a ballot in the mail. Uh, if you are inactive, which means you haven't voted in the last two federal elections, uh, you can request a ballot. Most of us will be getting ballots automatically. Um, and the ballot itself is secure. It is confidential. It's, it's completely anonymous. Uh, the part where you sign and your signature is used to compare to the signature in the poll book, that literally gets ripped off of the envelope before it goes into the stack that's meant for being opened and counted. So your ballot and your vote remains secure, remains confidential. It protects the people that work there. Uh, for people who are blind and visually impaired, who want to vote using the special accommodation machine that's available to them, that is available at the polling place. Importantly also this year, you can go to your polling place and hand in your vote-by-mail ballot. It used to be that you had to mail it or get it to the Board of Elections and, and polling places themselves were not a place where you could hand in a ballot. This year, you can do that. If you really want to go to your polling place on Election Day, what I would encourage you to do is vote your VBM, your vote-by-mail ballot, and bring it to the polling place and hand it in. If you do go and vote and you're not blind or visually impaired and ready to sign an affidavit that says you're blind or visually impaired, then your voting at the polls will be on a provisional ballot. That's the same as a vote-by-mail ballot. It's paper. You'll fill it out with a pen or a pencil, steel it in an envelope. So, um, what would I, I encourage everyone to do, uh, vote your VBM ballot as early as possible. If you really want to go to your polling place on Election Day, vote your VBM ballot and bring it to the polls. Uh, I understand the concern people have. It's actually an interesting situation. For many years, one of the biggest concerns about the polls was the lack of a paper trail with respect to our voting machines. Now we have a system where because every ballot is a paper ballot, there will be that paper trail. So we're protecting the health of our poll workers. We're protecting the health of everybody else that will be entering that space and breathing and talking and touching things. And we're doing it in a way that preserves access to a secret ballot for every eligible registered voter and citizen in, uh, Passaic County and the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Director.
And I'll also be able to bring them to the ballot boxes, correct?
Yes, the ballot drop boxes. There are five already in place, at least five more going into place around the county between now and the beginning of October.
And, and just, uh, I did have a meeting with the, uh, with the Board of Elections, the County Clerk and the Superintendent of Elections, and our goal is to have, um, a, a, a drop-off box in every municipality, and we may even have in the larger municipalities multiple locations. The, the, you know, the rub is that they have to be in a place that has, um, 24-hour security cameras. So clearly it's easy when we talk about municipal buildings or police stations, most of them have cameras. But when we talk about multiple in other towns, it may get a little trickier, but that is our goal. Um, the, the state is gonna, um, provide us with five additional. We, we may have to buy the others. But again, I believe that would fall under the CARES funding, so.
And you're on top of that. And you're, and you're quite on top of that. So I don't think anybody has anything to worry about.
Listen, I would say that, that I would say that the three departments, the County Clerk, the Board of Elections and the Superintendent of Elections are very much on top of it. I'm just, you know, myself and my office is, is just here to help them in any way that we can. Um, it's, you know, it is going to be a huge undertaking with the presidential election being all vote by mail. But I have confidence, uh, I have confidence in the three offices that it's going to go off smoothly.
So do I.
Director, through you. Um, my question is, uh, Freeholder Bartlet, you said that the voter can bring their BMI to, uh, BMBM, sorry, to the polling place, correct? That I understand.
Correct. That's, that's new in the law this year. You didn't used to be able to do that, but you can do that this year.
If there's somebody at the polling place.
Well, you can bring it to one of the open polling places, if not every, but the place you're used to, like, like for me, if this year, the, the school where I go vote ordinarily isn't a polling place, obviously I can't bring my ballot there. But for folks, and look, I feel it, who want to go vote on Election Day, you can do that. And you're going to do it on paper either way. So you might as, might as well vote the one that comes in the mail and drop it off.
Right. Uh, but my second question is, uh, can you bring your, uh, vote-by-mail ballot to the municipality, uh, to the clerk's office?
I don't think so. Um, you want to either get it into the mail or get it into a dropbox or get it to the Board of Elections. Uh, if you were to, if you were to bring it to your municipal clerk, then your municipal clerk becomes your bearer.
Yeah. So I don't believe that, that, that is a, uh, under the executive order, an allowable place to drop off your ballot.
Okay.
No, it won't be.
So there's, there's really only four places, right? You could put it in the United States Post Office, one of the dropboxes, you can hand deliver it to the Board of Elections, or you can, uh, drop it off in the polling place, which is again, new this year. But I don't believe that you can drop it off at, at a clerk, because remember, there is a chain of custody. And, and again, Freeholder Bartlet certainly could talk to that better than I can. But, you know, that is the concern with any of those things, that the chain of custody is never broken.
Okay, okay.
Well said.
And, and just to clarify, and just to, just to clarify, I think I know the answer here. Um, even though it's a national election, presidential election, you have to submit it somewhere in your county. You can't walk across county lines and submit it at a dropbox in Essex or Birmingham, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Correct. You can, you can drop it in the US mail anywhere in the United States. But when it comes to a dropbox, yeah, don't go putting your Passaic County ballot in an Essex County dropbox.
I just want to, I just want to clarify that point in case anyone thinks that all dropboxes are the same or, or, or any.
They're all the same within the county that you're registered to vote in, but they're not all the same from county to county.
Yeah, correct. Thank you. Yep.
Moving on.
Moving on.
To the consent agenda. I have a motion to amend K-78.
I'll move it. Can I, uh, point of order, can we do that and add the, uh, other to, at the same time?
I didn't know. I thought we had to do separate.
I think they should be separate.
Okay.
Who, uh, who seconded that?
Uh, Lapore.
Lapore? Okay. Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Yes. I have a motion to add K-81, K-82, K-83.
Take that motion.
Was that seconded by Bartlet?
Lapore.
Freeholders' actor.
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Yes. Um, I'm going to put this out there. Uh, I'd like to vote from the agenda tonight, K, uh, K-71. Need a little more information on it. I believe that's, I think we have to still correct, counsel?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Do we have, do we have to vote on polling K-71?
No, no, we don't vote on that. You have control of the agenda.
Okay, okay.
I could ask for those Freeholders who are not speaking, if you could go on mute, because there's a lot of, it's very difficult to hear, hard to, uh, hear what the Director's saying.
So I'm talking about K-71, pulling it from the agenda. I didn't know if we had to vote on it. Okay. So then we're going to vote on K-1 through K-83, uh, except for K-71, which we're pulling. And the late starters and K-78 have been amended. So can I have a motion to vote?
Move it.
Okay.
Roll call.
Freeholders' actor. Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Uh, we're going on to new business. Can I have a motion to move the personnel agenda?
Yeah, I moved the personnel agenda.
Freeholders' actor.
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Yes. I have a motion to vote on the bills.
I'll move it.
Freeholders' actor. Bartlet?
Yes. Yes.
Best?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore? Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Yes. Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Freeholders' opter? Bartlet? Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Director, Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lizarra?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Sandy.